Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 26th meeting of the Newland Planning Board. Just a reminder, we are recording and then you're on video. We're going to go out of order a little bit tonight because we have some things that got changed on the agenda. And as far as minutes, we don't have those yet, but we will get those for our next meeting. So the first thing that we're going to handle is the Gilman Trust discussion, which the applicant has asked for a, or is going to ask for a continuation.
So I'll recuse myself and ask for a continuation.
Thanks, Jeremy. Okay. I don't know if we need, yeah, I guess we need to vote on that. I'm just looking through. Yeah, okay. Any questions from the board? Okay, is there a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And then next up, we also have the discussion on the Hanson property, 10 Main Street. Who would like to talk about that? Come on up. And just turn the mic on if you would, the button on the middle, so it's green.
I thought I was going after the tree cutting.
Yeah, sorry, just changing the order, just to sort of move things along here.
No problem, it's fine. My name is Mike Hanson, and this is my third time back here, and we're looking to put an office on the corner of Main Street, across the street from Spring Lodge Farm. And at this point, we're at, since the last meeting, what's changed is that we made the building a little bit bigger. We went from a 40 by 60 to now we're 40 by 72. That just gave a little bit more room for the entry and a bathroom off to the side. And there's 18 parking spaces out back, and that hasn't changed. And for tonight, rather than trying to get approval, because Adam's not here, I guess I would just like to bring everybody up to speed, and then when Adam gets back, we might want to have another meeting at that point.
Yeah, and we just got the traffic study on Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, the board has not had, at least I speak for myself, has not had a chance to review that adequately.
Yep. And, you know, everything is great, except for the fact that we still can't increase our site distance to the pulling out of the lot to the left. And we did, you know, meet with the state since the last time we met, and they didn't have any issue with the site distance. The only thing that they said is if we ever want to do any retail business out of there, we would have to go to them for an actual, some sort of different approval. But we could do the office there, no issues with the 18 parking spots, and we could, you know, even do residential housing there if we wanted to, but not retail. That was one thing that they said. Beyond that, I don't think, the drainage study is done, the landscape plan is done, those, and we met with all the heads, the department heads, and, you know, water, Rob Thorpe, has no issue with hooking us up because there's a pre-existing hookup there, and we are actually going to be using less water than the house that was on Main Street. And the sewer line, the existing sewer that's there is fine, adequate for what we're proposing. So Bob had no issues. Jay had no issues for fire, but we are going to put a fire suppression system in there, and we're going to have a place to attach on the wall. So it won't be a charged suppression system, but if there ever was a fire in there, they could pull the truck up, hook up to it, they could take the water from the truck, and they could pretty much just flood the place. So, and the reason we're doing that is because it doesn't require us to have a sprinkler system for just the two offices.
Right. And then Bob Harrington had asked that you do the, I know you touched on this, but the engineers review the sewer hookup. You didn't have any issues there?
No issues.
Okay. Are there questions from the board on this?
Michael, have you talked to the water people about their construction project with regard to their water lines? And are you, when are you planning, if all goes well with you, when are you planning to start this work?
Okay, so if all goes well, I'm going to say late summer, early fall, get started, because I think that there was some discussion about the water people using our lot, the actual construction company that's going to be using the water line. So, and I have no issues with that.
Okay.
So, as far as the hooking into the water line, when they, when they come by, if they want to give us a new service, that's fine, or we can use the existing one that's there if we were to hook up prior, but I think we're going to have a new service by the time we actually, well, you know, get to that point.
Okay, okay. And I did talk with Bob Harrington and, about the curb cut, and apparently someone had mentioned maybe having a flat curb, but I think that it should be a raised curb, just
Okay.
For the fact that people are going to go, be going in and out, and it's a dangerous intersection as it is, so.
Yep.
If that's not a problem, I know it's not as much fun to plow, but it's not insurmountable.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that's fine. And we're still going to have it, everybody, we're going to put a sign on our, coming out of our lot that says right-hand only.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mike, can you have Horizons include that? If it's included on the plans, we won't have to put it in as a condition.
The curb cut and the sign?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Did you have a question, Emily?
Oh. I'm sorry, I may have, I may have missed something. Did you say that there was a sideline setback issue?
Not in the, with the DOT, for their road, they didn't have an issue with it. And when you read the traffic study that we had a traffic engineer do, he didn't have an issue with it either. So the site distance works, but it's not, it's not great, you know, I mean, it's just not. So we're going to, anybody that pulls in there, pulling in and out of there really isn't the issue, it's pulling out, excuse me, pulling in isn't the issue, it's pulling out. So people, when they pull in, they got to turn around in the parking lot in the back, and then when they pull out, we're going to have it, a sign facing them that says right-hand only.
Okay, so I must have misheard. I thought you said you had a side yard problem, you're saying a sight line problem.
Yeah, sight, yep, yep.
It happens, I do that.
No problem. I probably have a side yard problem, too, I just don't know about it.
All right, thanks. Are there other questions from the board? Okay, so as we're going to continue, are there any questions from the public, just out of curiosity? We're going to continue this, but, okay. So as we're going to do that, we just need a motion to continue to our next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Standing? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and now tree cutting. 782 Pleasant.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thanks, thank you.
Hello?
Hey, Greg.
For those who don't know me, I'm Greg Rusnicka, I'm a professional landscape architect at Bonin Architects, representing our client tonight, Christopher Winship. The application is to remove this one leaning eight-inch birch tree. It would bring us below our point threshold. However, we are proposing a replanting plan. This work is part of a wetland permit that we received to build a boulder retaining wall along the shoreline, which has already been completed. And the second kind of phase of that work is going to be the replanting this spring.
And can you talk a little bit about just the replanting?
Sure, the plants are all from the New Hampshire DS Native Repairian Buffer List, so they include lowbush blueberry, button bush, service berry, clethra, so it's assorted native shrubs.
Great.
On the picture, where's the tree that's affected? Excuse me. On the picture, where is the tree that's affected?
It's that one limb that's hanging out.
Hanging out over the lake.
Correct.
Okay.
Right where that arrow is pointing to, that one limb. So that's a multi-stem birch tree. There's, I don't know, probably a dozen stems in it, but those will all continue to grow and remain intact.
And just for the board's understanding, Adam did go out and visit the site before he was out of town and saw the erosion that's been caused by the exposed tree roots in that area, and so that was part of the impetus for that as well.
Correct. And I believe when Adam was first approached by the homeowner, they discussed it as a hazardous tree, because it does kind of, it does overhang their use area and their waterfront. So we would, you know, look to the board to consider that in, you know, granting the request.
Just, just a question of interest, the roots are growing down into the water, is that?
The root-
I'm just interested in what you do to solve that problem.
Sure. What's happening right now, or what was happening, is that basically wave action from boating is causing the shoreline to wear away. The state usually asks, as a kind of first step to controlling an erosion problem like that, to do a vegetative solution. In speaking with people at the state, in situations like this where it's very clearly wake action from boats that cause it, that solution tends to not work. So from there, they go to a, kind of at step two, go to a hybrid solution, which is rock and vegetation, which is what we permitted here.
Thanks, Paul. Other questions from the board? Questions from the public? And Greg, can you say you'll have your full points once you do the replanting?
Yeah, so we're, the piece we're removing, that limb would be a five-point, five-point tree. By states, the state has a matrix, has a planting matrix, based on the size of a nursery container plant. So even though by state scoring, we wouldn't be going deficient, we use the state scoring to come up with a plant list that would replace those points.
Great. So no further questions? Is there, that I'm not seeing any, is there a motion from the board on this?
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstention? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next up in our out-of-order agenda, we'll talk to President Steubner about the sign, Colby Sawyer.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully this will be a little more straightforward than some of our other requests. We are proposing to put a sign at the entry of Kelsey Field. We've worked closely with Adam, so it's an appropriate size, and the purpose of it is really just to direct visitors into the fields. Right now, there's a sign horizontal to Siemens, once you are on the Kelsey Field side, but there's nothing directed from the road to let people know where to turn in. So that's really essentially it.
Is it turned right into the field or the parking lot?
Into the field.
Into the field.
And I think, Kim, can you, do you want to scroll down to just show folks what it looks like? Any questions from the board on this?
So just a few points from Adam.
Sure.
The, there was a single abutter within 200 feet, and basically, essentially, the only question would be that the board needs to believe that the sign is, the size, the signs, the size and location are appropriate as presented. And institutional zone, if you remember, the sign permit, signs permitted are larger. Do you have the dimensions on that by chance?
Yeah, it's 24 by 36.
Yep. Turn my notes here. Yeah, that's right, thank you.
I don't know that I have that on our, I'm sorry, I don't have the height.
Other questions from the board before I do finding facts? Yeah, David.
Will there be any lights?
Lights are a great question when it comes to the college. I do not believe so.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not shown on there. That's a good question, though. So as far as, yeah, oh, sorry.
Is the purpose of the sign to direct cars to pull in there?
Yes, so visiting team buses often just go right by the entrance because they don't know it's there, as well as parents and others that are coming to the games, community members when they come and use the track, that kind of thing. So it's really just to make it easier to see where you turn in.
Yeah.
And it'll have a signage on each side, so whichever direction you're going on Siemens, you'll see it.
So are there questions or comments from the public? So just a quick finding of fact, the six-foot square sign is reasonable in size for the institutional zone. The location should not adversely affect the abutter located within 200 feet, and directing visitors to Kelsey Field at the crossing is inappropriate usage of the sign. Okay, any other questions from the board? Then I'll look for a motion.
I move to approve the sign for the Kelsey Field.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Have a good evening.
You, too. We didn't get to public comment yet, so I'll ask for that now. Is there somebody here who'd like to talk about something that is not on our agenda? Steve, come on up.
I wanted to ask the planning board for their views on the results of the election and what that means. We obviously had several, three meetings in December and January in which I spoke, and I was generally opposing particularly the detached ADUs amendment number four. It was voted down by almost two to one. The other, two other planning board proposed amendments were also voted down by similar margins. That's a very unusual thing. In 2015, a ill-advised sign proposal was voted down, but otherwise, from 2000 to 2020, the average planning board endorsed amendment, the worst voted one, was still over 75%. In 2022, you only got a 60% vote, which was fairly low, 69% in 2023, that's the most contentious vote. This vote was quite a difference, and so, you know, we had our disagreements on what it was that the town desires, and I'd like to know if, what the thought is from the planning board.
Just restate your question.
Yes, what is your reaction to the vote of the town to oppose by dramatic margins amendments number one, two, and four?
So I'll let others speak. This is our first meeting since those votes. Of course, I was disappointed. I thought that the measures were reasonable and good for the town, but this is the kind of thing I think we're going to have, from my opinion at least, we'll have to think through in, you know, the coming months and potentially years. It's not a problem in my mind that is going to go away, so I think it's something we're going to continue to have to look at to see what we can do, and we have to obviously do a better job communicating with the town in terms of, so they can understand the concerns and also to maybe combat some of the confusion or concerns that folks had about what this would mean. So that's my take. I don't know if others want to weigh in.
From my perspective, the fundamental issue is still there. It's a question, a legitimate question, that I think we, as a planning board, have the prerogative to address. So from that perspective, obviously, part of the town, or a majority of the town, didn't agree with a proposal that we had to the solution to what I feel, and maybe that's part of the problem, is an issue and a problem for the town. So I don't think the issue's going away. Again, speaking only for myself, I believe that perhaps some of the measurements that we used were unnecessarily large and could be constrained and rethought and represented to the town. But the fundamental issue, as far as I'm concerned, and the fundamental issues that those three issues represent, doesn't go away.
How would you frame that issue? What is the fundamental issue?
Well, I don't think it's a fundamental issue singly. I think each one of those issues is a single thing in itself, and I think each one of them represent a question that the town needs to address.
But the overarching question, the fundamental issue that-
The overarching question is a question of how do you control the demand for more living space in town in a way that also honors some of the traditions and wishes of some of the members of the community?
Anybody else have a view?
I will. I think, you know, to both Tim and Paul's point, the need for varied housing and additional housing is not going to go away, and it is not just a New London problem, it's a New Hampshire problem, and it's beyond that. So the first time that we made major changes to accessory dwelling units in New London was because we were forced to by the state, and I think in this instance, next year, we will probably be forced to by the state once again. So, you know, we might have gained a year before a change is going to be required, at least on the ADU side of things, but potentially, we will be looking at making an adjustment to the zoning board, I mean, to the zoning ordinance, rather, as it's going to be basically handed down from the state, that municipality is going to need to comply, very similar to 2016 when we had to adjust at that point in time. If anything, I think, you know, the Housing Commission, Adam, the board, everybody worked very hard. We listened to the survey, we listened to all of the information during the master plan updates, the requirements for housing, so if there is anything that I see that we could have done better, it's communicate more, maybe have that conversation sooner so that it isn't immediately on the heels of time to vote, which I think stirs everybody up. The opposition was pretty hot, and it occurred at the 11th hour. However, the board and the Housing Commission board had been working on it for over half a year, and attendance very early on was pretty much zero or minimal. So if anything, we need to work on getting public engagement more so that the general public isn't just hearing the loud voices at the 11th hour.
I'd like to respond to that. First of all, I don't share your view that it's a slam dunk that we're going to have a legislation on this, but we'll have to see. As far as engagement, I came on December 13th and raised any number of issues and was met with no response. Now, there was a response to the one issue I raised in that, between that meeting and the early January meeting. Apparently, some wiser heads prevailed on the two ADUs in every lot proposal, and that was dropped. It certainly wasn't what I walked out December 13th feeling was the sense of the board, the board overwhelmingly wanted that. So you mentioned the master plan, I want to review something with you here. Detached accessory dwelling units. Based on the interest provided additional, in providing additional affordable housing in the survey and the community meetings, the planning board may explore whether authorizing detached ADUs in some manner would be an effective way to promote additional affordable housing. Significant concern about enabling detached ADUs was expressed during the community discussion of ADUs in 2016. In weighing changes to ADUs, detached ADUs, the planning board should consider appropriate means to focus such development and encourage creation of affordable units. For example, and there are four examples here, restrictions on the size of such ADUs, number of bedrooms, et cetera. There weren't restrictions, you were enlarging. Which zones and overlay districts would be appropriate for such units? No limits in your proposals. What aspects, such as minimum lot sizes, setbacks, and other characteristics, might be appropriate? There were no limits in your proposals. And one citizen, starting last summer, asked about setbacks again and again, and she was rebuffed every time. Was it, in fact, I never felt like there was any serious consideration to applying setbacks to detached ADUs. The fourth one, whether income or rental limitations are appropriate. No limits were proposed. Recommendations, consider allowing detached ADUs subject to appropriate restrictions. It was aimed at affordable housing, and yet now it's all diversity of housing. The word affordable appears 13 times in the master plan. Diversity is mentioned with respect to housing twice. It is my sense that this vote represents the feeling of the town that we have enough big houses, we have enough carriage houses on the lake, our density is enough, we have one problem, and that's affordable housing. And I think the community would support solutions that are aimed at affordable housing, but this board stepped back from that and was all about diversity of housing, all about changes that would have more impact on big, expensive houses than they ever would on affordable housing. I would add that I believe the board is hostile to our zoning, views it as too restrictive, and I think these three votes prove that the town doesn't see it your way. We like our zoning, we like not having a stoplight, we like being able to find parking spaces when we go to our stores. We have 217 units already approved or in the pipeline, and that is going to be 200 more cars or more. And so I think the townspeople said, we're not ready to sign up for an open-ended change that has a marginal effect on the one issue that the master plan highlights and that I think the survey highlighted, which is affordable housing. So I read these votes as a wake-up call to the planning board to think specifically about what you're trying to address and not this global, we want more housing. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Any other comments from the public? Oh, yeah, sorry.
Can I ask Steve a question?
Sure, if you'd like.
Steve, what's the source of the 217? I've never heard a number that high before.
157 units from Continuum is the current proposal, 60 units for Long Meadow Commons, and Long Meadow Commons is talking about a follow-up project, I have no idea what that would be.
So you're not talking about anything that's other than in the future, you're talking about what's currently on the plate if they were successful?
Yes, that's right. And of course, we have zoning changes in the last two years that have relaxed the restrictions and have led to some development, I think, in the commercial area.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Any other comments from the public? Yeah, Rich?
Rich Epstein, resident. I guess I want to say how much I agree with Steve, and you probably articulated it much more better than me, but maybe I just want to emphasize one specific access point that's within Steve's statements about. I thought, I mean, I think the town definitely wants workforce housing, and I think it could be made a case also for elderly housing, but that leap to that very ill-defined- be made a case also for elderly housing, but that leap to that very ill-defined diversity housing was where I think, and that just seems to justify almost anything. I remember in one meeting in this room, I think it might have been a selectmen meeting, but a resident got up and talked about how, you know, they're all for, you know, these other housings, and the one answer back from the people who were up there was housing diversity. And it stumped us residents, but after now thinking about it more, I think that was really where I think we have to kind of pull the reins, and I don't think that is a justification in itself. It's great if we try to solve these problems, and the result is to look at all the diverse options, but to say it's the justification, I think, in hindsight, I don't think is the best way. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Anything else from the public that's not on the agenda? Okay, just looked through my notes here. So our next meeting will be April 9th, let me just double-check that. Yeah, so we will have the items that we continue tonight on the 9th. I believe that's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, thanks, everybody.